I'd like to welcome each and everyone to the this evening to the, excuse me, city council meeting and I'd like to have, call this to order and I'd like to have invocation of order one with Ms. Natasha Francis, please.
Mayor, good evening, everyone. I have invited an intelligent and talented young man to help with our opening prayer. It is my pleasure to introduce one of the boys and girls, one of the children at the, oh, he's another adult, at the Boys and Girls, a good example of our community achieving in Hopkinsville. Please welcome Logan. Thank you, Logan. Logan Jones.
Hello. My name is Logan Jones and I am here today to talk about my four years in the Girls Club of Hopkinsville, as well as just recently becoming a staff member. Just a little bit about me, I love to play video games. I'm a musician, I play the euphonium. Obviously, I just graduated from high school. But to move on to my time as a club member, I joined the club freshman year and it was mostly kind of forced upon me. When I was in elementary school, I actually thought of the Boys and Girls Club as just the place where the weird kids go. And so after, just after my gotten an argument and a whole bunch of issues with the family, we moved into a spot where there's not very many kids my age and it's really hard to be going through your teen years if you don't have any kids your age. I remember a time actually where there is a kid I hung out with and he was still in elementary school and I had just started middle school. And he was the closest age that I could have in my neighborhood. So just being able to go to the Boys and Girls Club, a place where I could have kids my age and adults that would actually pay attention to me and actually care for me was really important to me and it helped with my development as a teen and all the way through till adulthood, like till I just turned eighteen. I participated in some of the clubs they had to offer, particularly the Dungeons and Dragons Club, as well as an esports club, of which I played Super Smash Bros. and won the whole tournament. If anybody had asked me, I would say that this club has changed my life in a better direction. It has given me the ability to finally understand the problems and what I wanted to do in life. It also has taught me how to be a respectable young man and to respect others and even myself, at which I struggled with at the time. However, once I graduated, I did try to join the US Army, but I have a heart condition that had stopped me from training. So it was great here that they would allow me to come back and work as a staff member to help mentor the children. That brings me the biggest joy, actually, to these kids' faces light up when I walk into a room. They're always like, Mr. Logan, Mr. Logan. It brings me so much joy. In fact, I wake up every morning really excited to see the kids and it is always my favorite part of the day to walk into those doors and to be able to be with the kids. Especially on the weekends where I'll sit in my room and I'll have nothing to do and I'm like, I just want to see these kids. It's also really fun to see how all of the gears turn behind the scenes, especially as a team where we'd go see colleges and stuff. I'd always wonder how they'd set that up. So just seeing the thought process behind all of it has really brought me a lot of joy and thankfulness for what the club does for us. All in all, the Boys and Girls Club has provided me with countless opportunities to grow and succeed and I couldn't have any better place to go after school. I probably wouldn't have made it through high school years if I hadn't gone to the club, honestly. It, it helped me get through a whole bunch of problems and without the club, I'm confident I wouldn't be here right now, honestly. So I want to just thank everyone for letting me have this chance to speak and thank the club itself, actually, for giving me all I have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Let us pray right quick. Lord, have mercy on all of us. We need your help, Lord, through this process of getting our community worked on day by day. Thank you so much for all you do for us. Amen.
Alrighty. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call on Ms. Brittany to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Francis?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Here.
Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Wilcox? Councilmember Meek?
Here.
Councilmember Lumberger?
Here.
Councilmember Keel?
Here.
Councilmember Bill?
Here.
Councilmember Handy?
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
Alrighty, thank you. I will now call on item six, public comments. If anyone would like to come and speak at the podium, please state your name and address for us. The floor is now open.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Natasha Francis, 1811 East Seventh Street. I'm here on behalf of NAACP Branch 3092. The Hopkinsville Christian County Branch of 3092 is preparing for an annual Freedom Fund Scholarship Gala, Gala. Our theme for the 2024 is Bridging Our Community. This year, Hopkinsville Christian County Branch 3092 will publish a community booklet celebrating the community of Hopkinsville and Christian County. This book will record our businesses, personal achievements, churches, memories, memorials, your youth achievement and up and coming events. Ads are purchased in the price range from twenty-five to a hundred dollars. The publication will be in full color. This campaign is the signature fundraising event for future scholarships award and provides for networking, identifying, and opportunity for you to increase your engagements with the important work of the NAACP. Please contact Book Chairman Jay Dawson at eight oh four five three six two zero three three. I'm gonna repeat, eight oh four five three six two zero three three. I have also a flyer to pass around to the city councils. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else would like to make public comments tonight at the podium? Alrighty, seeing none, we will move into item seven, Mayor's Comments. We got a few to talk about tonight. One thing we'd like to talk about is the Alhambra last weekend, they had Brooke Bailey over and they done the Nutcracker. They had a little over three thousand people over there for that. We had a lot of young people performing and showed a lot of talent that we have here in Hopkinsville there. And my hat is off to Brooke Bailey and her group and to Ms. Prim and them at the Alhambra for taking care of all that because it was a lot of work. Because they was there from Monday to Sunday and they had a full house on that. We have the Christmas tree lighting on Feb- on Friday, the seventh at six o'clock. And Toby says we're gonna have a lot of fun with that. We got Christmas caroling and so on going on after we light the tree at six o'clock. The parade will be Saturday on the eighth at five thirty. We will have a lot of fun with that. Hopefully, good Lord gives us a dry couple hours right there according to the forecast on that. And then we have the Fire Department doing Santa Claus Coming to Town on the seventeenth and which the Fire Department, they have them riding around on the fire trucks all over the neighborhoods and just watch the city webpage because it'll be on there showing where they're gonna be at and what times they'll be coming through, what's, what sort of town on that. I'd like everyone to remember the Salvation Army's Red Kettle Campaign. They still need volunteers. I know it's cold, I know it's damp, but it's still a lot of fun. And I'll ask everyone to go out and please do that. We enjoyed it last week and we've got signed up again this week. Karen told me I was. So on that, let's don't forget Nikki Chambers and the Kiwanis. We have warmed the children coming around right now and we're working on buying coats and warm clothing for them. And we need to remember that. We're trying to raise money. We think we've got everything for this year, but we're working on next year's funding, how, well, we know how much we can deal with. So if you can give a monetary donation or bring a coat, we'll be glad to take it for the Kiwanis here to City Hall for Nikki Chambers. We got stuffed the cruisers with HPD. We got that going on. We got a lot happening there. Just give the Police Department a call. Chief Newby and Assistant Chief Pacheco will be more than happy to take all your stuff that we can because we're gonna have to make a lot of family doing that too. So please do not forget that. And now all the Christmas stuff's over with. I've got to talk about another thing that I was informed about in leadership the other day that I did not talk about. Wanted Street Center, Terrence and his crew are doing great things over there. But we are working on taking bids. Me and Mike Perry and the city are working on taking seal bids to tear down the stadium. The stadium is being tore down because it is unsafe. I do not want children playing on it because you have rebar sticking straight up and a little child fall on it and get injured and that's something we don't need in the neighborhood over there and then young people don't need it. But what we're gonna do with, with that spot where the stadium is, Terrence got a grand plan. Don't, don't, don't ever think he doesn't. He always does. We're gonna put the elementary building there to separate our middle school and high schoolers from the elementary aged children and it's gonna be a grand scheme. They've told me a little bit about it. They showed me what they're doing over there and it is all about the Boys and Girls Club and they are working hard just like you heard a while ago, standing here for that young man a while ago at the opening of this council meeting. So, no, I'm not just tearing a building down just to say, oh, we're getting rid of an old dilapidated building. It is a dilapidated stadium. But we are going to put something back there for the neighborhood and the community for a whole. And that's it. It's our strive to make it a safer, better place in that neighborhood. On that, next thing we got to talk about and my finance team's been on me. My Parks and Recs guys are working with me really hard is Purdue Lane. Purdue Park is coming along, is moving forward, but we gotta get ready to break ground in the spring because of grant money. I'm not giving the government back no money that they done give us. So, you know, council, previous councils before us have put up ARPA money and stuff like that, but we have two other grants that will mature in the spring. So we will be looking forward because I've been asked about that here recently a whole lot. When are we gonna do something with Purdue Lane? And Mike Perry and his crew are getting together on that and we're working forward on that. So, all that being said, that's all I have in Mayor's Comments. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and we will move into item eight, reports from officers and committees and we'll go from there and we have no reports from that. So we'll move to item nine, approval minutes on November the twenty-first regular meeting.
So moved.
Got Amy and Terry. Alrighty, all those, any discussion on this before we move forward? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Alrighty, item nine's gone. Now we move into ordinances and we got a fair share of those tonight. Ordinance forty-six dash twenty twenty-three renaming a section of East Eighth Street to Miss Bell Hooks Way.
An ordinance renaming a section of East Eighth Street as Bell Hooks Way. Whereas the Bell Hooks Legacy Group submitted a request to the E911 Advisory Board to rename a section of East Eighth Street to honor the late hometown feminist author Gloria Jean Watkins. And whereas the Hopkinsville Christian County E911 Board on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three favorably recommended renaming a section of East Eighth Street as Bell Hooks Way. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that the two hundred to four hundred block of East Eighth Street from South Virginia Street to the CSX Railroad as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference is hereby renamed Bell Hooks Way. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed.
Alrighty, any discussion? With a clerk call, please.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis? Roll call for the, the ordinance.
Ordinance? For renaming Bell Hooks?
Are we saying yes?
Yes. We're calling roll.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And that does pass on first reading.
Alrighty, ordinance forty-seven dash twenty twenty-three renaming a section of East Twenty-first Street to Bill Flynn Boulevard, first reading.
An ordinance renaming a section of East Twenty-first Street as Bill Flynn Boulevard. Whereas the City of Hopkinsville submitted a request to the E91 Advisory Board to rename a section of East Twenty-first Street as Bill Flynn Boulevard. And whereas the Hopkinsville Christian County E911 Advisory Board on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three favorably recommended renaming a section of East Twenty-first Street as Bill Flynn Boulevard. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that a one thousand five hundred and three foot section of East Twenty-first Street as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference is hereby renamed Bill Flynn Boulevard. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause constitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. And section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Don Marsh and Travis Martin, second it. Any discussion we'd like to have on this? Seeing none, I'll call on clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis? Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And that does pass on first reading.
Ordinance forty-eight dash twenty twenty-three Canton Pike rezoning on first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Zone properties located at forty-four oh five and forty-four twenty-five Canton Pike. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution twenty twenty-three oh six to assign the original zoning designation of V two, General Business District to properties located at forty-four oh five and forty-four twenty-five Canton Pike. Whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their October City Council to approve original zoning application R two three dash ten dash one. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning properties. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to Caris one hundred point two eleven Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, this is Resolution twenty twenty-three oh six and recommendation dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, properties located at forty-four oh five and forty-four twenty-five Canton Pike as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein are hereby zoned V two, General Business District. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after passage and publication according to law.
Motion to approve. Terry?
Second.
Jamie, you second it. Ms. Humber. Alrighty, any discussion about this? Seeing none, I'll call on clerk, clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Handy? Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And that does pass on first reading.
Alrighty, ordinance forty-nine dash twenty twenty-three pile lane zoning, first reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Zone properties located eleven eighty-five and eleven eighty-nine pile lane. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by twenty-three oh six to assign the original zoning designation of R three, one and two family residential district to properties located eleven eighty-five and eleven eighty-nine pile lane. Whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three meeting for City Council to approve original zoning application R two three dash ten dash two. And whereas City Council concurs, social and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning of the properties. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, two eleven Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Community and Development Services Resolution twenty twenty-three oh six and recommendation, recommendation dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Property five and eleven eighty-nine pile lane is further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein hereby zoned R three, one and two family residential district. Section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid. Such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Amy?
Second.
Steve? Alrighty, any discussion? Any discussion, I'll call on clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis? Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And that passes on first reading.
Okay, ordinance fifty dash twenty twenty-three pile lane and Peach Tree Place zoning for treating.
Amending the zoning maps of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Thirty-five, ten thirty-seven and ten thirty-nine pile lane and ten ninety-six and ten ninety-eight Peach Tree Place. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution twenty twenty-three oh six to assign the original zoning designation of R two, single family residential district thirty-seven and ten thirty-nine pile lane and ten ninety-six, Peach Tree Place. Whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three meeting for City Council to approve original zoning application R two three dash ten dash three. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning of the properties. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to Caris one hundred point two eleven Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Community and Development Services Resolution twenty twenty-three oh six and recommendation dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, twenty-eight Peach Tree Place as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein are hereby only residential district. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinance, ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion?
Motion.
Amy and Terry? Alrighty, any discussion? Alright, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And that does pass on first reading.
Okay, item F, ordinance fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three Code of Ordinance Supplement, first reading.
Enacting and adopting supplements to the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the twenty twenty-two S fourteen and twenty twenty-three S fifteen supplements to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hopkinsville, which supplements contain ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement to the Code of Ordinances of this municipality. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that the twenty twenty-two S fourteen and twenty twenty-three S fifteen supplements to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, which include ordinances of twenty-one and December sixth, twenty twenty-two, copies of which are on file in the City Clerk's office are hereby adopted in full and incorporated into the Code of Ordinances by reference, the same as if set in its out in its entirety. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance according to law.
Slow move.
Bruce? Alrighty, any discussion on this? Alright, I'll call the clerk to call the roll on that.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lumberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And that passes on first reading.
Alrighty, item eleven, municipal order fifty-one dash twenty twenty-three, city video security cameras.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby designates and authorizes forty-one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven eight dollars. Sorry, forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-six.
Where we gonna find that at?
That's a lot of cameras.
Wow, that's a lot of cameras. Jason was looking excited back there.
Forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, seven eight cents of American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Slow move.
Travis? And Chief Newby, that was on the forty-one thousand. Any discussion on this? Alrighty, um all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, that passes there. Thank you. Okay, executive orders. Got you a drink, you ready to go? Okay, executive orders fifty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, Joint Hopkinsville Christian County Ambulance Board.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, City Administrator Troy Body shall be reappointed to the mayor as the mayor's designated to the Joint Hopkinsville Christian County Ambulance Service Board. And there is no action necessary on this one.
Okay. Executive Order fifty-eight, twenty twenty-three, Board of Appeals.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, Natalie Adams shall be reappointed to the Board of Appeals created by Chapter one ten of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and no action is necessary on one.
Okay, executive order fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, Hopkinsville Christian County Planning Commission.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, Michael Kinsler shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Christian County Planning Commission. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven and we do need a motion in a second.
I'm gonna move.
Travis and Steve, thank you. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, we're moving right along on that. Executive Order sixty dash twenty twenty-three, Surface and Stormwater Utility Board.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, Dave Fernandez and Diane Carney Turner shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Surface and January first, twenty twenty-four, City Councilmember Travis Martin shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Surface and Stormwater Utility Board. This term shall expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Uh, executive order sixty-one dash twenty twenty-three, City Council Board Appointment.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, City Council Christian County Ambulance Service Board, Travis Martin, Christian Senior Citizen Center Board, Donald Marsh, Hopkinsville Christian County ECC Board, Donald Marsh, Hopkinsville and Christian County Airport Board, Robert Terry Meek, Human Rights Commission, Matthew Christian County Public Library Board, Jamie Lumberger, Long Range Planning and Coordination Committee, Bruce Smiley, Penny Ral, RCND Council, Jamie Lumberger, Area Museum Board of Directors, Matthew Handy, Retired Senior Volunteers Program Council, Donald Marsh, Tax Increment Finance Development Authority, Robert Terry Meek, Wes Donald Marsh. These terms shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and there's no action necessary.
Okay. Executive Order six, Hopkinsville Water Environmental Authority Board.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, City Councilmember Jason Bell shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Water Environment Authority. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And we do need a motion in a second.
Slow move.
I've got Don and Steve. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any Hopkinsville Electric System Board?
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, City Councilmember Amy Craig shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Electric System Board. This term shall expire December twenty-four. And we need a motion in a second.
Slow move.
Second. Got Steve and Jamie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, executive order sixty-four dash twenty twenty-three, Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, City Councilmember Steve Keel to the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board. This term shall expire December thirty-first. Need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Amy and Don? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, executive order sixty-five dash twenty twenty-three, Cable Television Oversight Authority.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, City Councilmember Bruce Smiley shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Cable Television Oversight Authority. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And we do need a motion in a second.
Slow move.
Okay, Jamie? All righty, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, executive twenty-three.
Effective January first, twenty twenty-four, Logan Kirkman shall be appointed to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. This term shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And we do need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I've got any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, that's got the executive orders out of the way. Now, item thirteen, other? Do we have any other comments that the council would like to speak about right now? One other thing I'd like to mention, Troy brought it back to my attention, is we'd like to remember to keep Joe Graves in our prayers. He was our IT Director for the city for a long time. He's having a lot of health issues and I'd like for everyone to keep him in their prayers at this time. Thank you. All righty, item fourteen, council member comments.
I, I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to have a huge shout out to HES and Jeff Heard and his crew. Because, um, you know, Public Works did a great job. They paved Walnut Street and then those purple lights made it really dark for the citizens over there. Um, but Jeff and his crew, we've, uh, I believe we successfully got all those purple lights changed out on Walnut Street. So thanks to those guys.